Oh, yeah.
Not very many people stayed. Who knows?
Okay, no action. Nobody cares about this. Nobody cares about this. I'm sorry to get on a town meeting.
No.
You could dig out.
I'll call this Town of Valhavn Board of Sleutmann's meeting to order for Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Number one roll call. Tom Anthony, hi, Tom. Uh, Don Young, Lad Olson, Leslie Dyer, myself, Elizabeth Funker, and Marjorie Stratton. Two approve agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Three minutes, approved minutes from the April thirtieth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Communications. Seeing none.
Yeah, we're gonna do the warrant.
Approved sign treasures warrant forty-six. I always do that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Go back to five communications.
And Magic gone.
I don't think there are any.
Are there any communications, Marge? No.
Because from the floor. Number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments.
Um, I didn't get anything from Woodard and Curran. Uh, as far as that, you know, the weekly update that we usually get. Um. I don't have much of an update for the downtown project, other than the engineers are working with uh, the one bidder Jake Barber. I think, I don't know if um, Kate has any thing that she wants to offer.
Um, no, I think what we're, our timeline really is the end of the month to essentially re-cost the project. Um, and we're just using that information to go from there. So we don't, don't really have more to report until we finish that process.
Awesome. Uh, net factory site reuse, uh, reuse committee. Reuse, resume.
That was a nice typo.
So we're, um, you're getting different members from the committee every meeting to get your updates. We've got them in here tonight for that. Um. So we are actually getting some stuff coming together now. So as of yesterday, um, we got our first introduction to the what we're about, what the committee introduction is, is going into the wind. It's gonna go on Facebook on Thursday. It's probably gonna get to other media. And we'll be either monthly, bimonthly, periodically submitting to the wind to be talking about what the committee's doing to help dispel some of the rumors that might go around. Um. And that's been a lot of background stuff, and you know about the grant, but the, um, but we're starting to get to actually do stuff now, so.
And we're also, um, kind of finalizing the engagement process of who's gonna be talking to who. Um, we have a spreadsheet that kind of goes over that, and we're gonna finalize that on meeting on Thursday, and we'll be working on that over the course of the summer. We'll have a date next.
Thank you.
In the break.
Yep. Uh, D, Parks Commission appointment. Sarah Newton would like to join the Parks Commission. Do I have a motion?
Please.
Motion to appoint Sarah Newton to Parks Commission.
Second.
All in favor? E, Public Works Weekly Report.
Millie's not here.
Right.
Some, I don't think.
You have the one weekly before.
She's got, yeah. Should we bypass that? Move it to the next meeting? She wanted to present, uh, an, another proposal for the excavator. I don't know if you wanna wait till another meeting or we have a discussion this week.
Let's bump, let's bump that.
I would like to, personally, I would like to move forward with it.
Yeah, I mean.
The majority of the board want move it forward to the next meeting, or do you wanna get, do it now?
Pam, you saw the, you said you, is that in here? Um, Marjorie had the hours from the rental.
No.
On, on it. Um.
But let's, let's, um, see what the board wants to do, okay, Lad? If there's a majority that wants to push it to the next meeting.
I'd like to push it to the next meeting. So, uh, I'd like to take care of it tonight.
So this is for the excavator, the lease or the rent, right? I mean, Millie's not here. I think we should bump that.
So the majority also pushing it ahead to the next. Need it.
Trickle it out.
Well, I guess that was boring. Well, we're moving the. Huh?
Oh gee, Eric, thanks.
Seal it up.
No more comments, just kick you out.
Okay. Um. Two, what's the next meeting?
June.
Pam?
Yes.
Question though, is, I'd like to table the, table the, uh, excavator discussion. The question I have is, do we have some numbers that we could review prior to the next meeting on the, Millie, did she provide those numbers to?
She didn't provide us with, I mean, she was putting together, um, some data, but she didn't give us anything.
Yeah.
So the message is to please provide that before the meeting.
Oh, obviously, it'd be nice to have that rather than, so we just actually look at it.
And she knew that.
Cause it, there's a lot of questions, and I think I've got concerned about it, but I'd like to have the numbers to. Yeah, I think it's worth waiting a week, two weeks.
The only data I have is the number of hours.
Okay, so you can um, probably include that with her, whatever report she has next time then. All right, moving on, A, Old Business. Knox County Monthly Report. Any questions on that?
Are we bumping the paving estimate too?
Paving estimate here.
Everything, I thought we would do everything.
Okay, bumping all public works.
All right.
Cause that's Millie's part of her presentation, right? With paving or?
I don't know if she had any kind of presentation. I mean, we did get this paving bid from Northeast Paving for going around the island road.
I just assumed it was part of her presentation, but do want to put that ahead for the next meeting, please ask. Um, all right, the monthly report. For Knox, Knox County.
Sam, here's a question you want.
I think the board's public record, like I just, when I tune in, I see, like, look at them, I'm like, is that just for the boards?
I think that.
Everything's public.
Yes.
Hey, you want these?
Yeah, do you want it?
I just, I didn't answer.
You take two of them.
You have mine too. Um. Number two, review and sign contract, Knox County.
So this is the contract that we presented at the last meeting. So the assumption is that you've had a chance to look it over and we could, uh, there's no pressure to sign it, but that's the agenda item. You know?
Marjorie, I didn't see anything. It was problematic, and then you do.
Well, I mean, I guess the, um, the big thing is those stipends for the, um, housing or the, you know.
I remember that was the only thing we were gonna change, and it was just, uh, the increase in the housing stipend.
I think I still have the red line. Maybe in the summer. Um. I know that. Was it Paul? Does anybody wanna see the red line version? You all set?
I'm all set, okay.
Paul Ping from comment about the, um, housing, cost of housing is what was, what, up to twenty-five hundred over there, so will they?
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-five hundred, I can remember. That was the national, that was the national average.
Right.
They've set us at eighteen hundred, which was lower.
Well, the best, and it's sort of at the meeting prior, what, what is the goal in like the Knox County does that for like their mainland, like they do this for mainland officers to accept? They don't, okay. Is the goal to like pay most or all of it, or is it to try to offset the cost? Because, I don't know, just when it was a thousand, it was real low. Now it's like one eighteen hundred, like that's such a big increase, but I get it, like, leading with the average. But is the goal to offset it a little? And make it less, or is it to cover most of the rent, you know?
I thought it was all the rent down.
Yeah, so it's up to, like, you're on a hand and they get to take eleven over.
Oh, no, no, no.
Right.
Like, I just, curious, because
I mean.
I think it is a good question, like, it would have been a different question if this vote was passed earlier, but.
It'd be nice if the, if the rents were stayed at twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, but like, what, so what happens? Do we just not put them up in a house that's over eighteen hundred, or does Knox County pay the difference? Like, what, or the, the police officer, and like, what does happen?
They would have to pay.
They wouldn't have to pay the additional. No, it used to, it used to be that
Yeah.
the deputies that were here. At least, you know, in the past, when I've been manager, that they would find their own rent, and then we would pay up to a thousand dollars a month. And then up to, uh, five thousand dollars a year in utilities. But we wouldn't exceed the thousand dollars a month.
When we've been doing the thousand, has it typically been like a lot more than that, and Knox County's covering it? Or is it like?
The deputy would have to cover.
Yeah.
Has that been what's happening? Like, the town hasn't been able, like, I don't know what rents are, um, really are around here.
I think the, I think the rent right now for the cop is twelve hundred a month.
Yes.
And
Yeah.
Plus utilities. Plus utility. So he's been paying, when it was a thousand, he's been paying two hundred out of his own pocket.
Yeah, I mean, like, I just think it may, would make people happy to know they are paying a little bit. Like, I get, I get.
He's not now.
I get, right.
Yeah.
And now it's like free and clear. So is eighteen hundred a necessary increase? Maybe twelve hundreds, and you know what I mean? Like, I get.
So they, so they.
They are increasing it.
So they, I can answer this. So on the, um, last meeting with the deputies and how the, the, yeah. They went off the national average of the increase that they bumped up, and that was like, can't remember if it was twenty-one or twenty-five hundred, and they s- they settled at eighteen hundred.
I know, but it's like, the, I'm, I'm just.
It's unfortunate that this conversation should have been done when that was
I want, I wanted to.
A lot more people here.
I, yeah, anyway.
It's too late.
What I was gonna address when I said I wanted to talk again, but anyways. I just think maybe that increase, like, I think people appreciate it. They're putting a little skin in the game. Like, yeah, we're, we're basically covering your rent, but like, if our rents aren't twenty-four hundred, I mean, maybe for this family rent, it would be, I don't know. But do, does everyone see what I'm, my point is?
Yes.
Like, now it's just like, oh, really? We'll put you up for free, like, whereas you've got a little skin in the game.
They're what they said they were getting above salt, but it's like fifteen hundred bucks a month, twelve hundred.
Yeah, so we gave it twelve?
Those little teeny tiny apartments up there are not gonna support a, a police officer with a family.
I don't know. I just thought.
Okay, I think we're gonna move along.
Yeah.
This conversation should have been earlier.
I raised my hand, you know, didn't.
That's, I'm sorry about that. I thought he did call on you, but anyway, thanks for your thoughts, Sam. So move to, uh, Old Business B, Memorandum of Understanding, Town Valhavn, Valhavn Water District.
Thanks, Pam. Um, hopefully everyone got the the Memorandum of Understanding and the MOU and my memo. Um, and so per the memo, um, after speaking with the attorneys, Pam and Marjorie and I, um, we discussed with the attorney transitioning what we showed you before, which was that letter of intent to this MOU, which we felt was just a much easier way to, um, you know, basically, it's, what we're doing is a memorandum of understanding. So this document will be signed by Pam on behalf of the Water District uh, trustees, and then by Marjorie on behalf of the town. And once that's signed, it basically says, like, both parties agree to move forward with the process of designing this, uh, new offices for the Water District and moving forward with the relocation of the Water District offices per the terms and understanding as, as, uh, as described in the Memorandum of Understanding. So the Water District did review it at their April thirtieth meeting. The redlined pieces that are very minor in there are, are the suggestions that we discussed at the Water District meeting. So you're seeing their revised version, and so today I wanted to see if you had any questions about it, if there was any, you know, discomfort with it at all, if you had any suggested changes, and then the next step. Um, once you have an approved version is, um, requesting that you, um, vote to have Marjorie sign it. Um, and then we can move forward with, uh, having the attorney create the final version, which, um, Marjorie and Pam would then sign.
You wanna change, um, number three, it says no more than thirty days, but you changed it to sixty. So you wanna change the spelled out thirty to sixty on both.
Thanks, Leslie.
Okay, that's just a typo then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Leslie.
So I just need a, um, motion to approve my signing this.
We do.
Thank you. If you sold.
No, they want us, want it to be signed. Make a motion that Marjorie signs the Memorandum Memorandum of Understanding between the Town of Valhavn and the Valhavn Water District.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, thank you.
Everybody say, I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
They can see, we're all in favor.
Okay.
But Pam, I think in the future, when there's a Water District thing comes up, that, like I have to do with the fire, I mean, the electric company, you really should accuse yourself when, when that comes before the collective. Cause it is, you're involved.
It's not a conflict.
Uh, it's.
As far as I know, it's not a conflict. Otherwise, I would have resigned from one or the other.
Again, yeah, I don't think you have to do that, but it's, 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 they appear to be a very huge issue to me.
Nine. Well, we're going, moving on. I didn't know if he was done. Nine, New Business. Liquor license application, Sherry's Kitchen.
One of the things that we, Elizabeth and I discussed was that, um, it used to be that with any new liquor license applications, that there was a hearing. Um, and certainly if you want a hearing, we can do that. It takes, you know, we have to post it, but, um, the, um, liquor license applications now say that you may, the municipal officers may have a hearing, or you can just approve it. So we, um, we haven't advertised that there would be a hearing. We were just hoping that the board would feel okay about just, uh, approving the liquor license this evening.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Um, this isn't the original, this is a copy.
Buy it. Everything, well, I'm kinda curious what's left on the agenda. You're saying through the whole thing, I still.
Park it.
There might be some on the table there. If you want your own.
You're going nowhere.
Do you want to design it? Pardon? That you voted to authorize Marjorie design it. Cause we'll do that at the final, we just have to make the final copy.
Oh, okay.
That's all?
It's the best of my scrawls.
Oh. That is. We'll, now we'll change some.
Me.
Yes, we were. All right, who else?
You're gonna be doing your agenda.
Let me see, I'm old. Uh, yeah, okay. Oh.
B.
Uh, nine B, open bids for the Therafaire ramp.
Uh, I just have two bids. One is from Sarah Martin, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And one is from Dinah Moyer, five hundred dollars.
Thank you. You want them?
I, did you guys want to look at the bids?
Okay. So Sarah's the big winner. Are you accepting the highest bid? Yes, please, thank you. I assume. Consensus of the board that we take the highest bid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For seven hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Yes. From Sarah Martin.
As it is, right? We're not having to work with them.
Yeah, you're gonna do that tomorrow. No, they, they don't have to tell it all over again. Uh, nine C, Emergency Ambulance Vessel Discussion.
So the, for the fat, yeah, the past couple of months, there's been discussion among the, uh, islands about this emergency medical boat, and I was hoping that Ryan would either be here, um, cause he's been going to all of the meetings. I went to the first initial discussion. Um. But then I haven't been able to attend any of the meetings. So he gave me, uh, some notes. So this is a multi-island effort from Monhegan to the Cranberries. There is support from the state legislature. There's potentially five million on the table from Shelley Henry's office. And, um, around two million from the main state ferry service. But I think, uh, that we have to be clear that the main state ferry service, their motivation is because they wanna get out of uh, of the emergency transport business. So of course, they would like to see this, um, separate, um, organization, uh, and a, uh, medical transport boat, so that they wouldn't have to do it. So it's just in the initial discussion stages, one of the things that they, uh, have asked Vinyl Haven is, well, could we house this boat here? And, you know, we've had a few different discussions with the harbor master and people in the harbor, and the, the consensus is that there's really no place in our harbor, in Carver's Harbor, to house this boat. It's a seventy, seventy-five foot boat. The other issue is, from my perspective anyway, is that for instance, if this boat is here, it's, it needs to be staffed by three or four paramedics. And if it's housed here, then where are these, you know, here we go with the housing again. Where are these paramedics going to be housed?
Well, you also have to have coast guard food captain and ABs and.
Exactly.
And is this boat, so Monhegan and Little Cranberry and North Haven? Miles. Or Miles, this is one boat, but all these islands?
Tennequins.
That's the discussion, it's on the table.
What, what, what? Realistic. Yeah, what good does if it's here in Vinyl Haven? I mean, yeah. I mean, I just went to Little Cranberry Island on my boat. You're gonna be two and a half, three hours to get that.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think there's a, a lot more questions than answers at this point. Um. You know, this is a multi-million dollar operation, you know, just the operating cost. It's not just the, the cost of the boat. Uh, it's you know, who, who is gonna manage it and, um, uh, take care of the whole operation, uh, of, of this, uh, you know, there's just, in my mind, at this point, there are a lot more questions than answers.
We need, we need a shoreside person also.
Right, right. So, uh, as I said, Ryan has been going to all the meetings. He's at training this evening. Um, I've asked him to write up, you know, maybe a one pager with some notes, uh, from the meetings that he's been going to. Um, so these meetings are ongoing, and I'll just keep you, um, informed about the discussions going forward.
Might be cheaper to buy a helicopter. Lost out on, one, one, one pilot, yep.
Number ten, Report of Town Manager.
I don't have anything, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Don't be sorry.
Uh, Report of Members.
I have nothing.
I'd like to make a motion or, or request that we go back and review the land use ordinance that we just passed and remove the clause that one has to have a permit with a thirty day waiting period for demolition of a private structure, other than what would be already registered as a historical building.
This is really difficult.
Do they just give them all the warrants, just to set it in there?
Why?
Because I think it's an intrusion on private property that shouldn't be allowed.
So you wanna have a, a town meeting about the ordinance?
Why do we have to have a town meeting? We approved it as, as a.
I thought we had to.
Yeah, but I mean, we can, well, yeah, well, we can bring it up to a regular town meeting, it's fine, but I don't think it's, I'm getting a lot of complaints from other people in town about that specific clause that we put through. I must admit that I didn't pick up on it when we, when we signed off, or else I wouldn't have got approved it.
Well, it has to go to town meeting to change it. Okay.
So I have no problem with it, but I'm saying I think we ought to bring it up, cause I'm getting a lot of discussion. Many people are saying they do not believe this should be required in Vinyl Haven.
You start all over, right? You have to have a public hearing?
You have to have a public hearing.
Right.
You have to propose the amendment, have a public hearing, and then it goes to town meeting.
Unless there's no one here on the committee.
What is the? What is the payoff, okay?
For demolition of any building, I think it's two hundred square feet or more, you have to have a demolition permit. And it's a waiting period of thirty days.
Gotcha. Can we have those notices about? There's enough of those notices to.
So, Don, you want to what, did you want, how do you wanna rewrite that?
I think that would only apply to buildings that are actually registered as historical, uh, sites.
Well, uh, what you would, what you would do is, uh, take the, that page from the land use ordinance. And if you're gonna make a proposal, you have to be very specific about what you're scratching out, what you're adding. Are you taking out the whole paragraph? So that's what, that's what we need.
Okay, I'll come back with it.
Lovely, um. Twelve, Executive Session, so to one, MRSA Section four oh five six A Personnel Matters.
We're just making a motion.
Now, now we're taking any, we're taking a motion in the window session, but okay.
That's all moved. Make a motion, we're going to Executive Session.
You guys didn't hold the no ceremony contract, then you're discussing stuff, is that true?
We signed it.
No, we signed it.
Yeah.
Oh, who wants a second to go in?
Uh, bye, Eric.
Yeah.
Bye, Eric.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Review and sign contact.
Because we've discussed it several times.
It before, you had the, you had the red line, it was a consensus.
Do you wanna do it now?
Yeah, we can sign it now.
No, I mean.
What?
Do you want an official motion? I just had a consensus, because you'd already had the red line.
Okay.